I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Wilmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, June 14th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Peeling.
Here.
John Cesar Ready.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank and Zika.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Bates.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Here.
I'd like to start this meeting by expressing the Board's immense appreciation to everyone within the district for all you have done to help us arrive at this point, our final board meeting of the school year. The challenges you have faced over the past 15 months seemed insurmountable. And just when you thought we had figured things out, the landscape or the guidance changed. You encountered intensely competing opinions from every angle. You listened openly, you researched, you determined your priorities, and made the best decisions possible at each juncture, always keeping health and safety and the best interests of children at the forefront. We are overwhelmed with gratitude and in awe at the leadership, perseverance, and teamwork we witnessed. It's important to pause and mark this moment to express our appreciation and our most sincere wish that you all take significant time this summer to be and recover. Thank you, each and every one of you, for your dedication and determination. Thank you. So we will turn to the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe Principal Dana Natsiakos is here to introduce Mackenzie's students. I think we have some special visitors. Our administrative team is here to meet up with the five students.
Yeah, so in lieu of Mackenzie's students, it will be the administrative team doing our final pledge of the school year.
Standing Principals, Administrators, and for leading the plunge as well. Indeed. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the May 24th, 2021 Board of Education Meeting and Executive Session Meetings. I move to approve the minutes of the May 24th, 2021 Board of Education Meeting and Executive Session Meetings.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to do? Seeing none, will the clerk, please indicate your approval by saying yea. Do we do that or not?
No, we need to call the roll because we have one participant per roll.
Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
John Cesar Ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank and Zika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Bates? Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Peeling?
Yes.
The motion carries. Before we move on, we have kind of started a tradition of honoring a few of our students or other members of our community as we start the meeting. And I believe this evening is no different. Tony, do we have a video that we wanted to share? Wonderful, I'll give just a brief introduction. Our students weren't able to be here this evening. However, we have a video that we'd like to share. The following video features students from Harper Elementary School who were some of the end-of-the-year writing contest finalists. There was an optional end-of-year writing contest for students to describe a highlight or a takeaway of their school year in either paragraph or poem. The students you will be hearing from today in order are second grader Audrey Korinski, third grader Victoria Igorova, excuse me, and fourth grader Will McDermott, Grace McLaughlin, and Charlie Cutler. And the last student is Jackson Ruff, whose poem is extremely special as he put his own twist on this assignment by talking about kindness and no room for hate. We are very proud of all of our students and of all of our writers, and congratulations to the finalists.
Hello. I am here to introduce some of our students that will be sharing some of their end-of-the-year writing with you. As we know, this school year was unique and challenging, but it still provided so many amazing moments, highlights, and takeaways. Therefore, we had an optional end-of-the-year writing contest where students could write a poem or a paragraph describing one of their highlights or some takeaways from this school year. As you can imagine, the responses were awesome and have truly affirmed what we know, that through all of the adversity, it's still been an amazing school year. Therefore, we are excited to share a few of our students' paragraphs and poems with you. These students truly did an amazing job capturing a highlight of the school year. So without further ado, students, please share your writing, and everyone, enjoy.
Think about the people in your class. What school do they go to? Well, the people in my class go to Harper and Ramona. That stands out to me because normally, the people in your class go to the school you go to. It also stands out to me because when I'm in middle school, I will not only know people that went to Harper, but I will know kids that went to Ramona too. That is why having Ramona kids in my class stands out to me as something special from this year.
Masks, sanitizers, social distancing, whatever you, everyone says. But if you ask Harper's students and teachers, they will remember different things: colorful masks, tie dye trends, and reliable tests, and listening lessons with funny backgrounds, virtual hugging, antics, and high fiving, and learning and studying 2021.
Helping others through the year, all the school is learning. Running and PE, personalities all over the school. Everyone is so nice. Remembering all the fun classes, doing all the work. Over the year, working in class, learning so much more. Putting heads together and working, having so much connections with each other. In COVID, we still learned, nothing is better than Harper's school, so much working.
On Valentine's Day, a string was cut and a harpoon drifted off to the sea. And for months, we watched that balloon stay strong and sail. As I watched the balloon, it got me thinking about this year and how we've had to stay strong too. We've had to go to school every day and put on masks, and we've all had to stay six feet and stay strong. I will always remember the balloon and us staying strong this year. We have had to work through this together, and we would have never been able to do it alone. This is the last year for me at Harford, but it wasn't all bad, and I enjoyed the year for better or worse.
I remember on the first day of school this year. I remember how excited I was to be in fourth grade, and I've come this far with my class. We've come this far together. I know that we will always have each other's backs at Harper. When one of us falls down, others help close up. We are in this together, but I'm moving to California, and then no one will have my back. This is what I thought until my friend told me that he'd never forgive me. He said that he would always have my back. So now I realize that Harper does care, more than anyone. We really are into this together. Always. Thank you, Harper. Thank you.
We don't bully at our school. Everyone is kind, no matter what you look like. We don't mind. Everybody, everybody's different, and that's what makes us great. But we all agree on one thing: there is no room for hate. We try to help each other in everything we do and value thoughts and feelings, no matter what the view. There's no place here for bullying, just friends both old and new. With short, simple message, I'll be there for you.
Thank you to those incredibly talented writers, and thank you for sharing that with us, the really powerful way to start our evening. So I believe we'll move to public comments, which will be accepted in person and remotely via Zoom. Are there any community members present that wish to speak? Great. Please come to the podium and state your community of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Folly, and I am from Wilmet. As a special education family, I have a child with special needs, we got the golden ticket this year with our remote LBS and general education teacher. With them, I was able to form an amazing team and will be forever grateful for them, and it has not been an easy road. Remote-only special education families have felt ignored and tossed aside by the schools in the district. It took my family six weeks to get a para assigned and another three weeks for the para to be supplied with the textbooks in order to access the curriculum to help my child. Many times, I was unable to get her the modified curriculum, so what ended up happening is I ended up doing it with my child instead of having the para assist. I was not equipped to be a paraprofessional. I am not qualified to be a paraprofessional. And yet, that's what I became all year for my childhood autism. And many special and needs families became paraprofessionals for their children because that's what we do. We step up because that is how we function. This year, I have spent, you know, a large portion dealing with helping my child. And social situations are very difficult for my child. And yet, she was sent emails from in-person students making fun of her for being remote, and she didn't understand it. She didn't understand why they were doing that to her. And she was given one-to-one social work minutes, but she still feels like she did something wrong, like it's her fault. That shouldn't be. There was no written apology that was sent to my child. There was none of that. So she still feels terrified, and actually, it actually made the situation worse. We moved to Wilmet because we were impressed with the fact that special education parents were valued as an IEP team member and listened to by the district, something that I did not see when we were in Chicago Public Schools. As a special education advocate for the past seven years and as a parent, this year's IEP meeting, given the importance of how difficult it was and my unique role, I felt dismissed as a team member on my daughter's IEP. I was seeing tactics that I would see in CPS IEP meetings. I have real concerns in the direction-
I'm sorry, we have to limit our comments to two minutes.
Okay, I have, I'm closing right now.
Okay, and there's another opportunity to follow up with one minute.
I have real concerns in the direction that special education in Wilmet is moving towards. Wilmet should be the example for other districts. I hope that this summer is a time for deep reflection of what didn't work and what can be better for our special education students.
We appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to address the Board in person? Okay. Mr. Damati, are there any community members who would like to speak via Zoom?
No, there are not.
Okay. Thank you. So at this point, we will move to Board Reports, and we will start with Facility Development with Mr. McKenzie.
Thank you. On June 7th, the Facilities Development Committee met at the MAC as part of the Committee of the Whole. We had an update on the summer construction projects. Due to the dry weather, the projects are ahead of schedule and now mostly under roof, so should remain on schedule. Due to locking in material contracts, we also have shipments arriving on time and on project. Ramona and Mackenzie extensions are keep on schedule for the beginning of a more normal fall. Air conditioning for the second floor of WJHS is also on schedule to meet the opening of the school year. We then discussed the projects under consideration for next year. The timeline for these is approving initial investigation this summer, then reviewing estimates and alternatives this fall, and finally approving projects this winter to begin work next summer. Three projects at Ramona were moved forward for detailed design, required roof and boiler replacement, and renovation of four very outdated bathrooms. As we continue to make these required improvements, it was brought up that we should understand the life expectancy of our buildings. At a future meeting, we'll have an update if one or two of our buildings may need extensive work in future. We then discussed opportunities to be explored in more detail at the next meeting. Ramona will need new windows in the near future. While on the schedule, we have asked the administration to see if this project could be pulled in one year. Mackenzie is in line for air conditioning for the large gym as part of our effort to update large spaces with air conditioning. In a past upgrade to the building, the infrastructure to support AC for all the classrooms was built in. We are evaluating the opportunity to take this option instead of updating the AC and the gym to update the connections for all the classes. Preliminary work indicates roughly a 10% additional cost to do all of these classrooms. This estimate is being reviewed, and possible district-wide uses of this upgrade is also being considered. At this time, there is nothing urgent that requires a meeting before August.
We can move, at this point, I believe, to school finance with Mr. Cesar Ready?
Your presence, Bailey. Sorry, I have three things to report on. The FY22 District 39 tentative budget, the same budget for the Wilmet Community Special Ed Agreement, the Special Ed Transportation Contract Extension, I was wrong, there's four things. And annual resolutions, and so first thing, on the District 39 budget. At the Committee of the Whole meeting, Mr. Bolzmeier reviewed the District 39 FY22 draft tentative budget. The numbers have not changed since the last review. The Board is required to approve the tentative budget at this meeting and the final budget in August. The account summary estimates revenue at $67.4 million and expenditures at $65.99 at this point. The tentative budget includes COVID-19 placeholders. We also reviewed the, what we call the WICSE tentative budget. District 39 serves as the fiscal agent on behalf of the Special Education Cooperative that includes District 39 and focus school district 37. Illinois State Board of Education requires WICSE to keep separate accounting records and to follow the same Illinois State Budget Guidelines required of all Illinois school districts. The WICSE budget is a flow-through entity which, with revenues and expenditures being the same. The public hearing will be held in August for final approval of that budget. We also discussed the Special Ed Transportation Contract Extension. The district is in the final year of their three-year contract with North Shore Transit. Illinois State Code allows two-year contract extension. The extension contract allows a proposed 3.3% increase from FY22 and FY23. The contract includes the key clause of school closures due to pandemic or natural disasters, with some flexibility provided to District 39. We also discussed annual resolutions and renewals. Mr. Bolzmeier reviewed the annual budget resolutions, which included inter-fund transfers to and from the O&amp;M Fund to the Capital Projects Fund and from the Educational Fund to the O&amp;M Fund. These transfers permit timely payment of construction-related expenses. The district receives tax levy receipts twice a year, in July, August, and February, March. Due to the timing of cash flow, short-term loans may be necessary to maintain adequate fund balances in the O&amp;M Fund. A public hearing will be held in August to consider the inter-fund transfer from the Education Fund to the O&amp;M Fund. The Board will be obligated to make payments of various recurring bills and previously approved construction-related services and materials during the month of July. Since there is no board meeting scheduled for July, this payment resolution enables the Treasurer to fulfill the payment of necessary financial obligations between June and August board meetings. So that's the report.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to strategy with Mrs. Schneider-Bates.
You? The planning team for the strategic plan is currently in the process of setting direction and future focused priorities. Once drafting work is completed in late June, the team will seek community review and feedback to assist in refining the plans before presenting a final strategic plan to the Board of Education in September. The team needs sufficient time to review community review and engagement opportunities before bringing it to the Board for final review.
Much. And we have a few liaison reports. We'll start with the CRC report from Mrs. Hart.
CRC held their final meeting of the school year on June 1st. The committee reviewed participation results of the online survey and the focus groups, and they discussed ways to further engage stakeholders throughout the process. Executive officer elections were held for the 2021-2022 school year, and this new team will look through the new strategic plan to help guide a research topic for the upcoming year.
And I believe we have an IASB update from Mrs. Kim.
Thanks. I don't have much to report except to say that registration for that 2021 Joint Annual Conference in November is open for registration. So if you'd like to join me, this exciting conference, please sign up. Thank you.
Great. And we have a WICSE update back to Mrs. Hart.
The WICSE Advisory Board met earlier today to approve the tentative budget, the fiscal year-to-date activity, and established meeting dates for the 2021-2022 school year.
Great. Thank you. And back to Mrs. Kim for the legislation update. You could have reorganized that in order.
Thanks. I, this is going to be a little bit longer. There was a flurry of activity in Springfield at the end of May as the General Assembly's session closed. A number of bills were passed by both houses and have been sent to the governor for approval. I'm going to go through some of the ones that affect schools. I think there were over 100 bills that touched on schools, and so I'm giving you a very abbreviated rundown. First and foremost is the budget. Thanks to better-than-expected tax revenues and a funding infusion from the federal government, Illinois has a spending plan for fiscal year 2022 that adds $350 million to evidence-based funding. Several new directives for schools were added addressing ethnic and religious accommodations, learning and policy adoptions for school students, including a bill requiring team uniform modifications for cultural values, religion or modesty preferences, a bill requiring schools to excuse students from PE while participating in religious fasting, a bill requiring a unit of instruction on Asian-American history, and a bill prohibiting school districts having policies that apply to hairstyles associated with race, ethnicity, or hair texture. In addition to a bill recognizing the November 8th, 2022 Election Day as a school holiday, other school holiday bills passed, one establishing June 19th of each year as a state and school holiday, celebrating Juneteenth National Freedom Day. I'm proud that District 39 has already declared June 19th a school holiday. Another bill adds January 17th Muhammad Ali's birthday to the school code commemorative holidays and adds a curricular mandate to the history curriculum to include contributions made to society by Americans of different faith practices. Since 2019, stakeholders and lawmakers have been working to address the issues uncovered in a Tribune expose report on physical restraint and seclusion in special education practices. In addition to Illinois State Board of Education guidance and rulemaking, a bill just passed limits timeout and restraint and prohibits use of certain restraints after the 2021-2022 school year. The bill also creates a grant program for schools to implement school-wide behavioral interventions. And then I'm just going to list a couple of other bills that were passed really quickly. One requiring school board members to be trained on trauma-informed practices for students and staff, which I mentioned last month. One allowing student excused absences for mental or behavioral health. One requiring the state's Children's Mental Health Plan to recommend that all youth receive mental health education and care in school. A bill setting a specific number of minutes that children must have playtime. One requiring K-12 comprehensive sex and health education. One requiring support for students who are victims of violence. And one requiring school districts to supply all 4th through 12th grade bathrooms with menstrual hygiene products. Also, SB 508 passed. If you recall, that was the property tax bill that provides that a taxing district's aggregate extension base shall be adjusted whenever an assessment increase or decrease due to the decision of a tax appeal board affects it. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that important update. My Zoom seems to be down, but I'll pass it over to Dr. Kremis Gole for our information items.
Thank you so much. So we have several informational items to report to the Board and share with the community. First of all, written communications. The Board received two communications from Kristin Newkranz Alcala regarding the recent updated outdoor mask mandate. The Board also received communication from Mary Rita Kraft, resident and District 39 employee, regarding air conditioner considerations for the hot temperatures in Ramona second-floor classrooms. Under the administrative announcements from myself and our staff, first of all, we celebrated graduation and the end of the year with our students and with most of our teachers and our staff members as well who have left for a well-deserved summer break. We celebrated students and the completion of the school year with two very special outdoor graduations for our eighth graders. Thank you to everyone who came out and celebrated with us in person, and for those who joined us online as well. It really was a wonderful evening. We also hosted a special transition day for our sixth graders and a promotion celebration for our fourth graders at each of our schools. So each of our schools has hosted several end-of-the-year celebrations of students and of staff. Schools and PTAs were incredibly creative this year as they navigated restrictions, yet ensured that our students and staff received a wonderful send-off to the summer. So thank you to everyone who had a hand in those celebrations. We are looking forward to summer school. Currently, over 450 students have enrolled for summer school across the three different programs. We have Academic Camp, excuse me, Review and Reinforcement, and the Extended School Year Program. We are continuing to work on hiring staff. This has been somewhat challenging this year, as so many teachers and staff are looking forward to and deserving of a summer break and a way to recharge after this challenging school year. So we do still have a few positions open. I believe in talking with our summer school coordinator today, she mentioned there are still three positions that we are trying to fill. The program does begin in July, so if anyone is interested, please consider applying. Otherwise, we are excited so many of our students chose to join us for the summer. In terms of planning for the upcoming school year, as we celebrate the end of this most unusual school year with a bit of pride and sense of accomplishment, we also are very much looking forward to the upcoming school year with eagerness and with hope. With the start of the new school year next fall, we are planning for a full return to in-person instruction and a return to typical school hours. If there is any family who believes their child may require a special exception to full in-person instruction, such as those through homebound services due to unique medical conditions, and they have not already communicated that need, we ask that they please reach out to Dr. Swanson at the earliest convenience. and they have not already communicated that need to us, we ask that they please reach out to Dr. Swanson at the earliest convenience. We did send out a survey. There really, at this time, we've been notified only of a handful of students who may need special exception. And again, much of that does depend on whether the vaccine continues to be expanded, the access to the vaccine continues to be expanded over the summer. We hope that it will. But the District 39 school year calendar for the upcoming year is posted online, has been sent out to families and staff as well. And as I mentioned, we do expect the school hours to be a return to those pre-pandemic hours that's especially noteworthy at the elementary schools where we did have to reschedule a lot of our specials in order to accommodate smaller class sizes and the schedule with our bubble classrooms. So we're excited about that. As we return to full in-person instruction, we do expect mitigation measures will still be in place and we'll continue to follow those as directed by the Health Department as well as by the Illinois State Board of Education. Over the summer, we'll continue to keep staff and families apprised of information as it becomes available. We do expect ongoing updates throughout the summer. So families, if you're interested, we will, we plan to send out two emails a month on the 14th and the 28th from the district unless there's a more imminent need to send something sooner, just to keep everyone updated without overwhelming everyone. Again, we do expect a full return to in-person instruction, but there will be some mitigation measures in place. Although we've said farewell to our students and the majority of teachers and staff, our administrative team continues to work throughout the summer, planning for the upcoming school year. So we will be hosting our all-day administrative council meeting tomorrow. This is time set aside to reflect on this year and to plan for next year. We will do some goal-setting and some important work to ensure that we are capturing the learnings from this year as we plan for the upcoming school year. We also need to do some scheduling right now with a full return. We will be building out a few different plans in anticipation of what we think the Health Department will be telling us. But again, there probably will be Plan A and Plan B as we anticipate what we think might occur. We did just receive an update and got some confirmation from the Health Department today. This is really exciting news. For adult staff members who are fully vaccinated, working in our building here over the summer, working in our schools where students are not present, we have been notified that we can remove our masks as fully vaccinated adults. Those who are not yet fully vaccinated should continue to wear a mask and maintain distancing. And anytime we're in the presence of students, we are asked again to continue to wear our masks, whether indoors or outdoors, and to pay attention, of course, to distancing. But this is really exciting news for those of us who work all summer in this building. The opportunity, if you're fully vaccinated, to remove your mask even in the presence of another individual has been supported by the Health Department. So with the board's support of that, we will communicate that out to our staff tomorrow. We would ask that everyone continue to maintain a mask in their presence because if a student were to walk in or a circumstance kind of necessitated masking, we want to make sure that we're prepared to adhere to that as well. But this is really, really good news and again, evidence of continued progress for our community. So thank you to the Health Department for that, for that clarification, I should say. And otherwise, we are planning for our staffing for next year as well. Our administrative team has been busy, busy, busy in the hiring process. We're in the process of hiring for the upcoming school year and have a really good start to filling all of our positions. We have been able to recall and place many of our teachers and also have hired several outstanding teachers and staff in preparation for the upcoming school year. We expect several additional positions will be filled by the end of this week, thanks to the hard work of our administrative team. Also being recommended to the Board of Education this evening is the appointment of Taylor Harvey as our Assistant Director for Student Services. Taylor will follow Ms. Angela Demay. There's Taylor. She's in the back here. Thanks, Taylor. Angela has accepted a position, and so we wish to congratulate Angela, who has accepted a director position in another district. Meanwhile, Taylor has completed a very extensive and thorough recruiting and interview process here in our district for this position. Some of you may remember that Mrs. Harvey has served as our assistant principal at Central Elementary School for this past year. Prior to that, she was a coordinator in our Student Services Department and an outstanding special education teacher. We are very fortunate to have her serving in our district and to continue in this really, really important role. So this evening, recommended to the board is Taylor Harvey as our Assistant Director for Special Education. Thank you, Taylor, for being here. With the board's approval, then, this evening, the Assistant Principal position at Central Elementary School will be posted tomorrow as well. So we're eager to get started on that position as well. In terms of property taxes, we do have a property tax appeal to report this evening. District 39 has received notice of one PTAB appeal for the 2020 tax year. Information regarding this appeal and the potential financial impact of the appeal has been included within the board packet. And another moment of celebration in terms of Freedom of Information Act requests, there are no FOIA requests to report this month. So we're moving on to strategic planning updates. I can give an introduction and then certainly you can jump in if you'd like. The 2021 Spring Assessment Report is our first report that we'd like to share with the board and the community this evening. District 39 aligned with neutral township schools by adopting NWEA MAP several years ago. MAP Growth is a computer adaptive assessment that is used to monitor student achievement and growth over time. The board will recall, we have increased our frequency of reporting to the board to three times a year at this point. And so we continue to monitor the growth and achievement of our students. We know with this highly unusual year that the students have experienced really over the last year and a half that there has been an impact on their growth. But Katie Lee and also Kelly Jackson are here to give a summary to the board on the achievement that we continue to recognize as well as the growth that we have evaluated. Katie?
Thank you, Carrie. I will begin with MAP, and Kelly Jackson will share the FCA update. First, a little bit of background. NWA has conducted a norm study using pre-COVID, pre-pandemic assessment data from 2015 to 2018. And NWA has implemented the new norms this academic year, and the 2020 norms were applied for fall, winter, and spring, replacing the 2015 norms. NWA strongly advised educators to use the 2020 growth norms, especially when reviewing data longitud. Because these norms provide the most current and accurate reference for MAP growth scores. So as historical and longitudinal data is presented to the Board of Education from today and moving forward, it's important to know that there may be slight differences in national norms information compared to what District 39 shared previously in previous years.
And just to highlight there again, the norms are updated, but they still are updated using data from pre-pandemic. So just a note of clarification there. It's hard to kind of wrap your head around. The 2020 norms actually are from data collected prior to the pandemic.
2015 to 2018. And the growth comparison period that you are hearing of today is from fall to spring. And previously, you've had reports that had different growth comparisons. Okay, well, what a year we've had. Throughout the year, the question on everyone's mind has been, how are students doing? Or in other words, that currently enrolled District 39 students achieve and grow as much as expected so far this year. Another question, however, we need to consider is what impact has this school year had on District 39 students' achievement growth? Was there an impact? Yes, there was, definitively. In some grades, there were declines in achievement and our growth compared to two academic years' results. If you would remember, there was no spring 2020 assessment of MAP. And in some grades, however, the achievement and growth or and/or growth did not decline. So we've had some interesting data that we've been digging into and that we'll further learn more about. So let's begin with a focus on achievement. So while overall student achievement remains high, the pandemic did appear to have an impact on the overall average achievement levels demonstrated on the MAP assessment in spring 2021 when compared to spring 2019. So while these differences do not appear to be statistically significant, the effect of the pandemic on overall achievement will continue to be closely evaluated and addressed. For reading, when comparing spring 2019 to spring 2021, the average RIT score for each grade level declined by one to two points, except for seventh grade where the average RIT remained constant. And in mathematics, when comparing spring 2019 to spring 2021, the average RIT score for each grade level declined one to four points, except for second, sixth, and seventh, where the average RIT remained constant or increased. So following this summary, what I'd like to do is share with you some charts. So this chart, I thought, would be important, especially for this year. Where did we begin with our average RIT score in the fall, and then where did we end in spring 2021? So as far as our scores, we have increased in every grade in both time periods, except for one. So these are graphs that you may be familiar with. Throughout the year, we've presented this type of graph. These are the spring mean RIT scores over time. And as a reminder, each bar represents different cohorts of second graders' average RIT scores in spring of their respective years. Reading is on the left and MAP is on the right. And this is for second grade. Fourth grade. If you're noticing the separation in bars, that's the reflection that we do not have spring 2020 data. This is fourth grade. Next, we will review student growth. Overall, the pandemic had an impact on the growth levels demonstrated on MAP assessments in spring 2021 when compared to spring 2019. The effect of the pandemic and growth will continue to be closely evaluated and addressed in a clear way that we will focus on. So using NWA's growth targets, those that were established by NWA based upon the normative studies of typical growth accomplished by students. NWA studies observed that approximately 50% to 60% of the students meet or exceed their growth targets. So using that as a benchmark for reading, the percentage of District 39 students meeting or exceeding projected growth targets from fall 2020 to spring 2021 falls within or beyond 50% to 60% benchmark range in some grades, but not all grades. In grades three, four, and eight, the percentage of students who met or exceeded fall-to-spring growth targets did not reach expectations. When comparing spring 2019 to spring 2020, the percentage of students who met and exceeded fall-to-spring reading growth targets declined in all grades except for seven. For mathematics, the percentage of District 39 students meeting or exceeding projected growth targets falls within or beyond 50% to 60% benchmark range in all grades. In all grades, the percentage of students who met and exceeded fall-to-spring growth targets reached the expectations in MAP. But when comparing spring 2019 to spring 2021, the percentage of students who met or exceeded fall-to-spring MAP growth targets grew in grades four, six, and seven, but declined in grades two, three, five, and eight. I will continue with the same information, but now represented graphically for you. So as you can see, the greatest impact of both, first, second grade students. Grade three. Again, we would say that our work would be independent. So we're to summarize achievements and growth based on the data that I just shared with you, both numerically and anecdotally and also graphically. For achievement, overall, District 39 students' achievement has always been consistent to prior non-pandemic years in both reading and MAP. However, some students demonstrated higher achievement than non-pandemic years, while other students demonstrated lower achievement than expected. So therefore, statistics of central tendency may not adequately reveal that individual successes and struggles are studied. For growth, our observation is that growth in reading was impacted more than growth in MAP. Reading growth will require additional attention in the fall, especially for our rising third and fourth graders. Growth in MAP falls within or beyond the 50% to 60% benchmark range in all grades. However, comparing 2019 to 2021, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding growth goals grew in grades four, six, and seven, but declined in grades two, three, five, and eight. So now that we've reviewed achievement and growth separately, viewing them together will provide an added perspective. And I believe you've become very familiar with these stacked bar graphs. As mentioned in the summary slide, growth in reading was impacted most and will require special attention, especially for our rising third and fourth graders. This may have been impacted by the limitations placed on small group instruction and key component to the District 39 program. The visual goal for these stacked graphs would be to have majority blue in the green, which represent high growth for either high or low achievement students, and less yellow and red. So visually, as I look through these slides for the different grade levels, that is what we're hoping for. So here's second grade reading. Third grade reading. Grade reading. Fourth grade MAP. Fifth grade reading. Fifth grade MAP. Seventh grade reading. So in addition to the summary statements that you saw on the previous slide, what we would add here in looking at this data is that approximately 80% to 85% of our students fell in the high achievement range even this year. However, their growth overall wasn't impacted. As you saw, you may have noticed some of the blue area shifting. As you saw, you may have noticed some of the blue area shifting up and down. So there are celebrations when it shifts up with the high achievements and high growth. However, there has been also dips that you won, I'm sure those. Now, one question to dig a little further would be the remote students, the remote learners and the in-person learners. Oops, sorry. I'm going to spend a little bit more time on this slide so that you could read the data. So the average spring RIT score of remote learners were consistently higher than in-person learners. And the percentage of in-person learners who met and exceeded reading growth goals were higher than remote learners in all. The percent of in-person learners who met or exceeded the MAP growth goals were higher than remote learners in all grades, as I said. So this is especially interesting since it highlights the variance we see in achievement and growth among our students. While looking only at the achievement, RIT scored appears that our remote students did better overall. You might think that. However, when examining the actual learning or the growth that was accomplished throughout the year, you can see that a greater percentage of our in-person students met or exceeded their expected growth goals. Share the results of the social emotional data.
Thanks, Toni. This school year, District 39 has continued its focus on building a positive and cohesive school community. This has been affirmed by the commitment of all staff to support the health and well-being of students and staff as a part of the return to learning plan. A focus on social emotional instruction and community building has been embedded throughout lessons at all grade levels for the entire school year. As has been our practice over the past few years, social emotional screeners were given to all students in the fall and the spring. The DEVERO Student Strengths Assessment, or DESA, was administered to students in pre-K through grade two. And the Mindsets Essential Skills and Habits, MESH, survey was administered to students in grades three through eight. The scores in the fall are used to set the baseline for work during the school year, and scores in the spring are examined to determine areas of focus for the coming school year. The DESA was administered to students in pre-K through grade two. It's an assessment where it's like a survey that teachers fill out to reflect on and assess each individual's unique patterns of strengths or areas of need. These reflect our spring scores, where thirty-eight percent of students fell in the strength category, fifty-eight percent of students fell in the typical category, and four percent of students fell in the needs instruction category. It's roughly similar to our fall scores, where we had thirty-eight percent again in the spring. We had fifty-nine percent in typical, so it went down a little bit, and three percent in needs instruction. So that went up a little bit, just by one percent. The MESH is a student, is a survey where students self-assess, and that was given to students in grades three through eight this fall and spring. The MESH assessment has two components, social and emotional competencies, which aligns with the competencies embedded in SEL lessons and is reflected in categories, excuse me, such as social awareness and self-management. The other category, or the other component is school environment, and that's reflected in areas like sense of belonging or school climate. There's the spring, spring results for grades three through five. For students, all areas of social and emotional competencies continued at or above the ninetieth percentile nationally. The areas of self-efficacy and social awareness showed growth since fall, with self-efficacy showing the most growth. And you can kind of see on the right hand of those charts where there's a little green indication where it moved up a little bit. For students in grades three through five, the results for the, the school environment indicate all areas are strengths, with composite scores placing will met at or above the ninetieth percentile nationally, with the exception being school climate at the seventieth percentile nationally. School safety, however, is of note, falling near the ninety-ninth percentile when compared to national scores. All area on this school environment portion of the MESH, however, scored lower in the spring than in the fall. So this will be an area for further investigation, and specifically the area of school climate, where it fell about six points since the fall. So there's questions where we can dig in more deeply and look at where the responses fell for more examination. For students in grades six through eight, again, you'll see on the top are the results from the social and emotional competencies component, and on the bottom, they are from the school environment component. For students in grades six through eight, students' collective responses indicated that social emotional skills were well-developed. All domains again were at the ninetieth percentile or greater, and two areas of strength to note are self-management and classroom effort, both of which fell around the ninety-ninth percentile. Seeing the most improvement since fall is social perspective-taking, which moved from the eightieth percentile nationally to the ninetieth percentile nationally, with an increase over its fall score and the highest percentage of favorable answers actually in the last three years. For students in grades six through eight, teacher and students' relationships and school safety were strengths, with comprehensive scores falling at the ninetieth percentile respectively. And that is on the school environment component. School climate and sense of belonging ranked between the fortieth and fiftieth percentile nationally. And this is a trend we've seen over the last few years as well. All areas on this portion of the MESH scored lower than in the fall. So again, for students in grades six through eight, school environment will be an area for further investigation and planning. Based on the overall results from the spring administration of the MESH at grades three through eight, again, school environment, specifically school climate and sense of belonging, have been identified as areas of focus for next school year. That being said, the district-wide SEL committee is in the process of developing lessons and curricular support for students across all grades to support the development of the SEL competencies and also address school climate and sense of belonging. The SEL competencies involve relationship skills, social awareness, self-awareness, self-management, and responsible decision-making. And our SEL committee has also added a sixth competency area in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. This summer committee work will entail the identification of specific lessons at grade levels to support all students and will also entail lessons to use for students needing interventions in these areas. Additionally, more in-depth use of the data from the fall survey is planned, so teachers are able to discuss grade level and classroom data and identify interventions for specific students and groups of students in these areas. Are there any questions?
I just want to start by saying that it's so much information, and we recognize how much work it takes to compile this very detailed report. So thank you for presenting that to us. Board members, are there questions?
Thank you, and I, I don't think it was a surprise to anyone that growth scores would be impacted. Others, just a quick question on math. Do, what happens when the teachers get the scores? Do they look through them, or do you pretty much wait and look at them collectively?
So this, this spring, typically, we will review data with teachers. So it's, it comes from a bigger level from our department to the principals and then to the staff, and then the teachers review their own at the classroom level. This spring, it ended, our window ended so late that we did not have an opportunity to discuss these spring results with our teachers, but that will be the first thing in the fall that, that will be reviewed.
The teachers will get the, the spring scores for the students in their class in the book?
Yes.
But they also do have the opportunity to look at them right after if they care to, and they know some good stuff.
Other board members?
Again, I want to echo the, the work that it takes to put something, a report like this together. Extensive. Maybe the penalty of that is it gives me lots of opportunities to ask questions. But, but I, I do recognize it takes a lot of work and there's a lot of detail. And I was particularly interested in the, the new data that hopefully we'll never have to do again, which was the difference between remote and in-person. That was a very interesting breakout and understanding that, that you got, because you could look at it one way and reach a different conclusion. I mean, we're looking at sample sizes that are self-selected, not necessarily random. So, so thank you for that. One other background thing, and it's, it used to be interesting to have longitudinal studies. And it seems like over the last four or five years, every time, there's been an opportunity to break the longitudinal data we've done. I'm not we, I mean, it's been done for us. So, you know, one day we'll actually be able to fill it in these tables. But, you know, it's like we change tests because we have to. We change tests because it's appropriate. We have COVID, which hopefully we'll never do again. But, you know, eventually we'll get to the point where we have full longitudinal data and it'll be a little easier to, at surface level at least, identify tracks.
Yes, we agree. There's, there's four years of fall and four years of winter, and we have three years of spring. So looking at locally and specifically how our students have done, we could use the four years to create that, but we would like maybe one more under our belt.
Okay, so one of the, one of the reasons we went to math was that it gave us the opportunity to compare ourselves to other school districts. Do we have some of that data? When would we see some of that data? I mean, this report was extensive on how our students did, but there isn't really any comparison to other school districts.
There, there is a way to get similar, what they call similar school reports. But I think, Mr. Kennedy, I believe that, you know, our township is really very of interest. And so what we would need to explore is conversations with our township and asking them to release, unlike the state assessments, that's something that they do not have to share with us. And so what we could do is start that conversation, not identifying our township schools, but at least sharing each other's data so we can learn from one another. I can promise you that we have those articulation conversations. I can assure you that of the three of Jabalite colleagues that I've spoken to, they've also identified and was a little surprised about reading. They have the same conclusions about math within their district as well. But short of revealing to us what their data is, I accept their anecdotal summaries of what they're seeing in their district as well. It's very much aligned with what I was asking.
And I'll add that the superintendents have also shared and articulated about the same. Everyone is on a slightly different timeframe in terms of when they're reporting out and how they report their math data. But we have, we have shared and discussed those, those results. Those who have in fact done the spring assessment, we've done some, some discussing and articulating there as well. And so there, there are some, there are some trends that we need to explore more deeply.
But I know it's a sensitive topic in school districts. Don't want to share that information or historically haven't. But that is one of the points of the map. Would it, maybe a rhetorical question, but would there be any advantage to the boards of the different schools talking about sharing that information? I know the superintendents are, but would it be helpful to, to have another level of discussion along those lines?
I, I don't know that that would specifically be helpful, but I don't want to discourage you from having discussions either. I think what's maybe more important for us at this point is to dig more deeply into the growth scores, those who are growing and what's happening for them and those who are not growing within our own district. That, to me, seems like the most fruitful.
The, I had a definitional question. I don't know if it's because of the way material is or it's, it was something chosen. But the, the definition of high achieving is, is again, for our school district, it's eighty-five percent plus or minus a little bit. That, that lumps a lot of different skill sets into one category. And it compares us against the state average, which in almost nothing else that we do, finances or any other criteria, we look at state averages because good or bad, we like to think of ourselves as being significantly better than the state average. It would seem to me that there'd be an advantage to saying high achieving was the top fifty percent of our students, low achieving was the bottom fifty percent of our students. And then we could get a, maybe a little bit closer feel for how growth at, at that spread. Is that locked in this way or?
It is, it is at the fiftieth percent. So for achievement, when we say high achievement, it would be active fiftieth percentile and higher is what we categorize students as high achieving. And then for, for growth, it would be fiftieth percentile and higher. So previously, I think you remember, we have those quadrants, you know? Right, the four colorful quadrants, and that's where the axes are, at the fiftieth percentile.
Our students.
Yes, of our students. That is something that we can look into. Very rarely do school districts adjust. So for example, if we wanted to move the achievement percentile to fifty-five percent instead of fifty as it's, you know, outlined, that's something that we could do, but typically all districts use the fiftieth percentile.
Yeah, I was, maybe I was misunderstanding this then. The, when I look on the historical achievement status and growth chart, the percentage numbers were, you know, pick a grade, let's say eighth grade reading. The, the four, the four numbers add up to hundred percent. The high achieving numbers add up to seventy-seven percent, and the, the two low achieving numbers add up to twenty-three percent. So I'm not sure the fifty percent either. I'm not asking the right question or not understanding your answer, which is clearly possible.
That's so, what those numbers show is that eighty, seventy-seven percent, I think is what we refer to, seventy-seven percent of our students fall above fiftieth percentile. So if we have the achievement being the vertical axis and the self-achieving percentile, seventy-seven percent of our students are up above that line. But then they're spread out across both, which is the horizontal axis. So what we're saying is of the students that are above that fiftieth percentile, we have a portion that have low achieving, so they'll be on the left side. And then our high achieving would be on the right side of that scale.
Okay, I'm going to have to absorb that, so that, that, thank you.
I'm happy to send you like that four quadrant visual. I think that will help, where you can see our students are represented by dots. And so you'll see most of the dots up high, above the fiftieth percentile, but then spread out as far as growth.
I, I, I won't spend more time on that, but fifty percentile, but most of our dots are above that line is where I'm having problems. So I'll ask about that, that rating. I, I guess the, and this is really more of a, maybe it makes sense for future thoughts, maybe not, but I'll, I'll throw it out there as something to, to consider. We, when looking at the historical achievement category, and we'll just stay with reading for a second, that our students effectively in second grade enter about three points above the median range. The, our students effectively in second grade enter about three points above the median range. And over the years, the median range actually grows at a slightly higher rate than our students. And, and that's, it's hard to tell if that's statistically significant or not. In the math, it's basically they stay flat during that time period. I'm wondering if that is the criteria that we want to go for, that our students start off really well and they stay really well? Or do we want that our students start off really well and they actually grow even faster than the norms? So it, it's complicated and it's hard to see from just this type of chart. But it's looking at it, and I don't think this is the right way to look at it. But one way you could look at this data is we start with, with strong students and we don't screw it up and they stay strong. And, and I know we do more than that, but, but these numbers, it's hard to get that information from this. So if you could at least kind of think of that as a thought exercise when you're going through these numbers. I'd, I always like to, to think that, you know, we start with strong students and, and they accelerate even faster than the average for strong students.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
You ready?
I think, given how important this testing cycle is, I wonder if we should think about doing some more parent education from, yeah, yeah, about what it means. And, you know, because I think we understand it, that it's, we have a lot of high achieving kids and a bunch of them didn't grow to expectations in reading. So, and that's the summary I got. And, you know, what can we do to, or what's that mean, you know, as parents? And what can you do to, you know, kind of help out here to get them up to speed?
I'll, I'll take on it. I think that's a great idea for those kids who may have dramatic decreases. Kind of the parent's response would be, what happened in the middle of it?
I have one set of comments and a question for Katie and another set for Kelly. So I'll start with Katie. By just a little bit of background, kind of where I'm at before I ask my question, you know, I think a lot about the MAP test. I work in a school where we administer a MAP test. I think growth and achievement are important. I personally am more interested in growth. I believe this test is a snapshot of one particular measure, given at one particular point in time. And I'm a huge believer in multiple intelligences. And I think our students have skills that aren't measured by these kind of assessments. But I do believe that MAP has its place. So when I was looking at this, I was looking at the, the idea of projected growth and, you know, the percentage that's meeting projected growth. And as I think you mentioned, and if I'm looking at page six of the report, in the middle of the page, under the, the subheading growth, it says NWEA growth targets are established by NWEA based on, sorry, based upon the normative studies of typical growth accomplished by students. NWEA studies observe that approximately fifty percent, sixty percent of students meet or exceed their growth targets in any given district. So my understanding, right, that the way the test is designed, the expectation is not that everybody is going to hit this growth target. The goal is the fifty to sixty percent. Okay, that was my question there. And then if anybody else says something, I can wait before I talk to Katie, I mean to Kelly. Okay. So first of all, I love that social emotional learning is part of the same report. It says to me our priorities are in the right place. So I had a question about school climate. I'm glad that we're making that an area of priority for next year. I'm wondering if there's any sense, maybe you said we, that you wouldn't have to investigate, so it may be too early to know this. Is there any thinking that the school climate and sense of belonging numbers could be lower because a lot of the learning happened this year in silos?
I think that could play into it. And we don't have the breakdown of remote learners versus in-person learners either, but that would be another interesting breakdown to pull out specifically in those areas. So we could see, is there something else that's affecting those lower scores? I do know sense of belonging has regularly come up at the five-eight level for the past few years. I think it, part of it may just be, you know, kids at this age. And how do we tap into that and how do we help them to feel more included? I'm, I'm really excited about the work that our committee is doing because it's going to be very targeted toward those areas. So I think that'll be good for the future.
Thank you, and thank you for the work you're planning on doing and what you've already done.
I, I think I've mentioned this in the past. I think it's fun and exciting to think about finding schools that excel in that one particular area in terms of school climate and see, you know. I, I don't know if that's acceptable, but I think that could provide really interesting resources for us if we look at that because they are also at that grade level.
I want to just say thank you to Katie and Kelly for your presentation this evening. I know it represents a lot of work and especially at the conclusion of this year, to be able to pull this together and present this evening, I thank you. I also know that much of these topics that have been discussed are also being discussed by the Strategic Planning Core team. Some right now at the, at the relatively high level of setting direction. And then the work that lies ahead will be to set some of those goals and the measurements so that we can continue to target growth for our students. So it is exciting to see that so much aligns and yet there is work to be done, there's no doubt. And so we're, we're really proud of what we were able to accomplish this year and yet we know that there is work to be done. So I thank everyone for their contribution.
We're ready to move on then to even more work, an update and a review of the strategic plan from this year.
Yes, thank you. So on September twenty-first, twenty-twenty, at the beginning of this school year that is just concluding, the Board of Education approved the implementation of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one District Thirty-nine Strategic Plan. The district initiatives were divided into three sections. New strategic initiatives, continuing strategic initiatives, and annual business. This month's executive summary report will note the status of each goal, provide an update and review of the applicable next steps. We're doing that in tandem with the strategic planning effort. So we'll give a, a quick overview of that.
I just want you to know, as we always do, the strategic plan is the work of the entire administrative team and I am representing them as they are here, supporting this as well. So since this is not a typical year and we all know that images convey messages that words can only hope to capture, our intent is to present the intended goals or outcomes, the status and next steps as efficiently as possible and then ask that you enjoy a video that summarizes these. At the end, our administrative team or I will represent by answering any questions that you have regarding the details that are outlined in this document. So first, the new strategic initiative was a big one. The twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Well-Met District Thirty-nine reopening plan. It is year one of implementing and it is the end of it as well. Yes, thank you. Our intended outcome was that by June of this year, that District Thirty-nine will have implemented the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one reopening plan, keeping students, staff, and community safety and wellness as a priority while ensuring that learning is targeted, connected, meaningful, and worthwhile. We are going to declare that this data is the outcome we met. However, District Thirty-nine has reflected on lessons learned and identified pieces of reliance to apply to our next year. And we are excited to do that. So this year has been challenging for every group, our students and their families, our teachers and the administrators, the superintendent and the members of the board. Among these challenges though, we have found some pieces of reliance that have just been amplified through this year. So continuing strategic initiatives, the first one being designing a kindergarten enrichment program. We are year three and developing and implementing. And by June of twenty-twenty-one, District Thirty-nine will have completed and reviewed kindergarten enrichment enhancement program, P39 at Central School and Harper Elementary School. And I will go out and eliminate say that this outcome we met with very happy. This summer, our P39 teachers will review program elements to make adjustments if needed for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And we are so excited and so grateful that all of our four elementary schools will offer this optional P-based program to District Thirty-nine families at all of the schools. Very excited about that. Student growth through differentiation, personalization is year three of implementing and it is ongoing. District Thirty-nine will evaluate the impact of differentiating instruction. Personalized learning is measured by maintaining or increasing the percentage of students who demonstrate high growth by meeting or exceeding growth targets at sixty-five percent on MAP growth reading and mathematics assessment. I have Mark Steen's voice in my ear saying, you sure you want to go that high? When we typically go for fifteen to fifty. You know, happily we could say even through this program, if we were two days that met that in MAP, I think we have and know that we can be better and therefore we want to be better. District Thirty-nine will evaluate the impact of differentiating instruction and personalized learning with measured value percentages being in student subgroups to grow in performance on MAP reading and mathematics assessment. In addition, we will continue to analyze benchmarking assessments such as NWA MAP, P39 Plus, DECA Mesh, along with pre-community base measures to inform improvement efforts in differentiating instruction for all students. So, wow, we would like to deem this status as in progress and ongoing. This is something that we would never really let go of as the goal of ours. And just to note for the next steps, differentiation and personalized, personalization of teaching and learning have been significant areas of discussion by the District Thirty-nine Strategic Planning Core team. And continued work in this area will likely be incorporated into the draft strategic plan that will be presented to the Board in fall of twenty-twenty-one. We will continuously monitor student achievement and growth and we strive to improve in how students can do that, both academically, socially, and emotionally. And District Thirty-nine will continue to build the capacity to address the needs of students and monitor student growth in those three areas. The learning campaign is another era that has come to an end. Year three, implementing high-press middle school. We have one project left. Our intended outcome was by spring of Plan Form One, the plan to address upper learning spaces, which was deemed Phase Three a very long time ago, will be finalized and implemented. It's in progress, but only for a short period of time in the fall of twenty-twenty-one. The team will assemble, a team will assemble and plan for the kindergarten reform next year. And we'll be done. And last but not least is the annual business of the district. The intended outcome for building school culture and community was that during this school year, District Thirty-nine will improve school culture by directly engaging conversations about diversity, inclusion, and fostering a sense of connectedness among all students and staff. We believe that this is ongoing, therefore under our annual business. School culture and climate, along with diversity and inclusion practices, have been significant areas of discussion by the District Thirty-nine Planning Core team. And we will continue the work and will be likely incorporated into the draft strategic plan. District Thirty-nine will continue to positively impact school culture throughout the promotion of inclusion, diversity, and central belonging and that being a gap. School safety. So throughout twenty-twenty-one school year, District Thirty-nine will continue implementation of the twenty-eighteen District-wide Safety Form, which includes facilities improvements, practice and review, safe practices, training for students and teachers. And again, this would always be ongoing. We have prioritized school safety in a variety of ways, especially this year adding our education protocol to that. So this can, this work will continue. It will most likely be incorporated into the strategic plan. And we will continue to engage in annual reflections on how to improve school safety and security always. Curriculum reviews, in particular, by June twenty-twenty-one, Department of Curriculum Instruction will have completed the third year of the science curriculum review. And so that outcome has been met. But we wanted to note that in the next steps, as the district pursues its new strategic collaborations in the coming years, it's likely that specific areas of curriculum review and improvement will be incorporated into this one. Continued work in this area will again, you know, most likely show in the draft of the strategic plan for future years. And we will continue to provide ongoing professional development and support for our consumers. And I believe sustainability planning and practices. By June of twenty-twenty-one, District Thirty-nine will continually seek to achieve energy cost reductions and promote environmental literacy among students. Again, this is an ongoing initiative for, a part of our annual business and will continue to be so. Brief strategic planning update for you. This school year, District Thirty-nine administration reached out to CEC to restart the strategic planning process. The work resumed in April twenty-twenty to celebrate successes as a district and identified improvement opportunities with a goal to develop a multi-year plan. So the strategic planning team has completed readiness meetings and orientation meeting, three data meeting, three data retreats, three vision retreats, and two setting direction meetings. So now we are here. Elena Bedard, CEC consultant, is preparing a draft of the strategic plan. Once shared, the next step for the strategic planning team would be to review and refine, which is the goal for the next meeting on June first. We will then seek stakeholder input late in the summer or early fall to complete the CEC strategic planning process. District Thirty-nine invite anyone, all members of the community to visit the webpage to access specific information. All materials from each of the meetings, such as the meeting agendas, presentation slides, articles, products, chat logs are posted with the hope that the committee will engage in the process alongside the full team. So I will exhale and say twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, what a year. And if you would like to draw your attention to either your laptop or the screen, please. And if you would like to um draw your attention to either your laptop or the screen, um please. That was a year at a glance. And I thought instead of ending on a personal note, we'll end on a happy out week. Um and I hope you appreciate this performing arts department at the Highcrest rendition of um the end of the year song.
You did it.
Happy summer, everybody. Happens to be a tradition of this app in that department. There's probably a few like to use past years. Um happy to answer any questions on behalf of the administrative team.
Thank you so much. That previous video was quite a time capsule. Profound. And I just want to say, I think it's incredible in the midst of a global pandemic to see this update on the strategic plan and how much else happened in addition to keeping things safe and learning these schools open. So uh questions and comments from the board?
Oh, it's one of the second. Um what, like that and also just the video today. Now I know I was.
Yeah.
I um I want to echo everybody else's and unfortunately I have a mundane question, so I don't want to break the mood with that, but but it, there's a positive part to it. On the uh to keep 39, the Mackenzie numbers um were really high. I don't remember them the last time we looked at it being quite as high, so we had a lot of just last minute, uh or not last minute, but acceleration toward the goal line.
Enrollment in the KE39 program for the upcoming school year?
Right.
Yes, that is, that is true. In fact, I think there's a wait list. Um and we're eager to make some decisions and start communicating out um next steps there.
So I think it's, it's great that uh we have that level of interest. Um and we'll be able to start using the school as soon as we've uh we've completed the construction. I also had a tactical question then. It said four sections at Mackenzie. Um I assume that means that you had to like borrow a space someplace? Cause I don't, so I know we have four kindergarten rooms. And we have, KE39 ends up using up the room for the whole day. So is there another, there's still some kindergarten kids that aren't with KE39?
Great, so students come to the academic portion of kindergarten in the morning and those who have chosen not to enroll in PE39 would be released prior to lunch. And the remaining students would um engage in lunch and recess and the other activities and then enter into their PE39 enrichment program in the afternoon. So depending on the enrollment at each school, the way the sections work are, is a little bit different. In some schools, it may be that we have a full section of academic kindergarten only students. And in other schools, it may be that those students engage across kindergarten, academic kindergarten sections and just leave at lunchtime when um when there are other students begin the kindergarten enrichment program.
It's, it's, it's great that we have that level of participation and that we have four classrooms and we're using all four. So thank you for all the, the work of priming the pump and now we'll uh we'll get a lot of positive referrals after this year that will lead to higher.
We expect that to be the case. Yes, thank you.
Um just a couple of comments and then a question. One is I'm going to echo what Lisa and Amy said. And when I read this report, that you know, the first one is about implementing the reopening plan, like you could have stopped there and I would have stood up and applauded. There's like 18 more pages after that of all the work you're doing, so thank you so much for that. Um I'm thrilled to see um the diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives in here. And then I had a question about the science curriculum. Um just as an aside, I love that we do these curriculum reviews. I think it shows an incredible um amount of foresight on our part. Um I just thinking back to the social studies one a few years ago, I thought it was good and then we changed it and it was like way better. So um I appreciate all the efforts that go into these deep dives. Um so I think the science curriculum for this year, some of the things had to be modified because they um they imagine um kids working together and they couldn't because they had to be distanced. Do we know yet where we are in the fall or is that sort of kind of we're waiting to see if um kids will be able to be working together more in groups like the curriculum imagined?
I, I think we're, we're still waiting on some of that guidance. It will depend on the vaccination levels and access for our students first and foremost. Um and then it will also depend on the guidance and where we're at in terms of community spread at that point. Um we are very hopeful that um for those 12 and older, we'll see a continued um loosening of those restrictions. Uh but there's a lot of time between now and then, and so we'll, we'll continue to close the number. Uh the, the state and uh the Department of Public Health have made ongoing adjusted, adjustments to distancing. And as you'll recall, the difference between six feet of distancing and three feet of distancing is huge within a classroom. You can engage in a whole lot of collaborative work if you can maintain only three feet of distance versus six feet. So we expect to see that continue and, and we're eager to get those final uh guidelines. Well, we've learned nothing is ever final, but the updated guidelines and, and we'll continue to plan accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Well, and the next is really the strategic planning liaison report in the upcoming feedback forums as we have mentioned. And I believe uh Lisa mentioned as well, um the strategic planning core team is continuing to do its work. Uh they will meet again on June 21st to review and refine the uh the work that has been aggregated by Arla, Arlena, the um consultant through CEC. And at that time, we will uh review the draft goals, update those. Um once all of that work is completed, we do want to host um again more opportunities for community feedback before we get to the point of presenting to the board. Um unfortunately, as we expect all year, the timing is not ideal right now. And so um we are contemplating a couple of different options. One would be late June, and we talked through this with the uh CRC. Late June, just prior to what we understand to be a, a, a time when many people travel for vacation in early July. Um or looking at mid to late um August, right before school starts. And then the third and final option would be waiting until school starts, people are re-engaged and then um holding those feedback sessions. Our goal has been and continues to be to present the final plan to the board in September. Depending on when those are scheduled, we, we do want to really honor the commitment that the board has made throughout, which is community engagement and feedback. And we know that right now, many of our family members, our students, as well as our staff, are less able to engage in some of that. So um we welcome any feedback from the board. Uh the CRC said either do it before July or after people are back from uh summer vacations and, and just the summer break that is so necessary. So we're taking uh that advice um in, into consideration, but we would welcome the board's feedback as well. And then I would let Amy and Lisa update the board on any other um summaries of the core team's work.
So I think we've hit all of the highlights in multiple places in the agenda. Um and I just think for additional feedback, my recommendation is later, et cetera, given um the community.
And, and I do agree, I think at this point, a, a little bit of a break to reconceptualize what we're aiming for post-pandemic may be, may be really helpful. Other thoughts? We'll keep uh working hard on that then. Um I know, as I mentioned before, our administrative team has some work to do um between now, before and after the meeting on the 21st. And, and then we will uh start to conceive of what those feedback sessions will look like. So thank you for that. We're eager to continue that work. We have some annual business to attend to.
Let's do it.
Okay, so we have our bullying report. Uh Dr. Chris, Kristen Swanson has put this together. I will let her provide a brief summary to the board.
So each year, our principals receive lots of reports about potential bullying and social, socially inappropriate behaviors. And they investigate all of those reports. They then provide information for us to compile the annual bullying report for the board. Um it is important to note that the definition of bullying for this report is defined by the state and has very specific parameters. Uh a very specific definition. With all instances of inappropriate behavior are investigated by our teachers and our administrators. They do address behavior. It is our job as educators to make sure that we are um providing feedback, guidance, and consequences to students as we are helping them to develop the appropriate social skills to function. So this year, in terms of the bullying that was investigated fully by our, our principals and system principals, we had nine instances uh of these, three were found in. All of those involved online behavior. And I will say that that was a big, probably not unexpected this year, but a lot of the significant issues that we investigated did involve online behavior as students spent much more time on online and interacting in that way. Um in all situations, we provide support for the victim as well as services and consequences for the, the aggressor. But again, our goal is both to change that behavior, to make sure that we provide guidance and feedback for students so that they develop more social ways to interact. The consequences and services involved this year are not limited to, but these are many of the things that we did. Um in-school suspensions, detention, orally written apologies, restorative conversations, work with the social worker, conferences with parents, teachers, and the students. We also added two questions to the MESH survey, which Kelly Jackson talked about earlier today in order to track some more information about bullying within our schools so that we have a little bit more information about what student perspectives are and perceptions and have that information in an ongoing way so that we can target interventions and make sure that we can analyze sort of what the students are telling us. Corey, does anyone have any questions?
What comments? One is the fact that there were identity days at Highcrest makes me very, very happy. So thank you. Um and then just, you know, the observation that, you know, obviously we hope for no instances of bullying, but I will say that, you know, where there is bullying or allegations of bullying, you're identifying it, you're investigating it, you're taking meaningful action with consequences and restorative practices. And I really appreciate those efforts to try to um provide teaching and guidance and instruction um so that it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I think our teachers and our building administrators are very on top of this and are really, it's everybody's goal that our students are developing the appropriate social interactions. And we do know that students, they're young, they, they're learning. And so part of what we need to do is teach them as well. But there are also behaviors that require consequences in addition to that instruction and guidance.
Some business to attend to. I will invite Corey to give a quick summary of um our annual business, starting with the resolution authorizing July bill payments.
So we have several items here. Each of them should be brief. If anybody has any questions, feel free to jump in, otherwise I will move on to the next. Uh the, the July author, the resolution for authorizing July bill payments. Um this is a resolution that we've done in the past. It allows the district to continue to pay our invoices timely over the summer since we do not have a July meeting. Since it's, we would continue to pay without the meeting, we would present any checks written from today through the August 23rd meeting. Um at the August 23rd meeting, so the board would see everything that we did during that period. The Illinois School Treasurer's bond renewal is a requirement of all school districts to take out a bond on the district's authorized treasurer. In that case, I am the district treasurer. And the, just for reference, the copy of the invoice is included in the board packet and the total cost is a little over $12,000 per year. So tonight, we're asking the board to approve the District 39 tentative budget. Um the, the amounts included in this budget are the same as what we've seen the last couple of months. On the first slide, we have a graph that shows that over 90, 90% of our money comes from local sources. Property taxes, transportation fees, lunch fees, PE39 fees, instructional material fees. So we are heavily dependent on, on the local sources of revenue. Operating revenues. Operating revenues, as expected, a little over 80% of our total operating expenditures come from salaries and benefits. We're people-heavy business, so this is no surprise. I really like this particular five-year look at our revenues versus expenditures. What you can see before the fiscal year 2021 pandemic year is that revenues are exceeding expenditures on an annual basis, and then the expectation that we return to that scenario for fiscal year 22. It should be worth noting that during fiscal year 21, without the additional COVID expenditures, the district would find itself with revenues exceeding expenditures. Here we see five previous years of operating fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. Then we have the projection for fiscal year 21, and then additional five years of projections from our five-year forecast. The red lines denote the upper limits and the lower limits of the board targets for fund balance in any one year. The decline that we've seen from fiscal year 20, the 70% dropping down to approximately 49, and then down to potentially 42 in fiscal year 22, is primarily driven by the construction projects that the district has undertaken for keep and the air conditioning across the street, the junior high on the south floor, and some of the learning commons projects. As you see going out, we level off in the 40% range. The operating funds total revenues for fiscal year 22, the budget is $67.4 million, or expenditures of $65.9. That leap gives us a projected surplus of $1.47 million. We do have some transfers out of the operating funds of a total of $5.9 million, $5.1 for construction projects, and $0.8 for debt certificates. A budget with these parameters would leave us with $27.8 million in fund balance in June of 22, and a percentage, which is a percentage of 42.13%. I think it's always worth noting that within this tentative budget, we have nearly $2 million of additional COVID-19 placeholders. Those are incorporated in the amount that's being asked to be approved tonight. And as we finalize and get some more clarity on our operational plans for the fall, we will start to peel some of these amounts back if we are able to do so. Changes, some of the changes from the tentative, which is tonight's numbers, to the final budget. So these are some of the bigger changes that I expect us to see implemented over the summer. Any changes within our COVID placeholder amounts? Anytime within the next couple of weeks, we should get our final 2020 property tax extension, which the key component to that is the value of new property growth. That's a very important number for a district like us. Corporate personal property replacement taxes has been going well this year. It'd be interesting to see what the state is projecting, especially in light of some of the state financial numbers being a little bit better than people were anticipating. Potential settlement of WAA contract, which expires this summer. The projects that we ultimately select for summer of 22 construction, as a reminder, the architectural engineering, a lot of the planning fees related to those projects will hit fiscal year 22, and then about 15% to 20% of the actual hard construction costs will hit the 22 budget. Keep enrollment, as we talked about a little bit ago, especially at Mackenzie, enrollment's going well. So we will incorporate whatever those enrollment numbers are come August. Transportation, another operational decision point for the district, where we're currently operating in a scenario where we have one stated per bench. You know, we're basically running a very similar amount of buses compared to a normal year with many less kids, so that will be a key factor in the budget. And then the transfers between funds, which we have a couple of resolutions that I'll talk about here in a little bit. And with that, I will open up to any questions as it relates to the fiscal year 22, District 39 tentative budget.
Talked about this a lot. I think we're good.
Fine, that is fine.
That's sort of an academic question about the sourcing of personal property replacement tax revenues, but we keep that to ourselves next time.
All right, so the next topic up is the tentative budget for the Willmet Community Special Education Agreement for fiscal year 22, as discussed, we did have a meeting earlier today. I guess this will take a minute. So this agreement's between District 39 and Aboca School, District 37. Wixie is required to have its own financial statements, and District 39 does serve as the test. This slide just shows real briefly, as was mentioned earlier, everything kind of just is a pass-through with Wixie. Revenues equal expenditures every year. In 21, the budget amount is $195,000, and in fiscal year 22, we have it at $201,000. And then at the end of each year, there is no fund balance for Wixie. And that is it for the Wixie budget. There are... There are no questions. We will move to the special education transportation contract extension with North Shore Transit. Couple of key provisions. So we have just finished year three of a three-year contract for special education transportation services with North Shore. State code allows the district to extend for an additional two years if both parties can come to an agreement, which I believe we have, pending board approval. And a couple of key items within that contract extension. Each of the years would see 3.3% proposed increases in the fees. And then as it relates to a world in which pandemics do happen, there is now a clause in there that states that if the district needs to close for a pandemic or a natural disaster of more than one week, then District 39 has the option to either pay 80% of the daily amount for routes normally run, and then if that happens, we chose that option, North Shore would be required to continue to pay their drivers' aid and mechanics at their normal wages and benefits, and they would have to prove that to us. Or we could elect to pay 37% of the daily amounts, and North Shore would have the ability to furlough their employees under that option, and they almost certainly would do that. One of the other key components is outside of the pandemic and natural disaster clause, there is a minimum days paid for 165. And that is it on the contract extension. No questions, I will move on to the budget resolutions. So there are three resolutions related to the budget for the board's consideration tonight. First resolution is a transfer from the operation maintenance fund to the capital projects fund of $5.1 million. This transfer is something that we do annually and is required because we're supposed to pay our construction projects out of the capital projects fund. That fund, particular fund, has no current funding source. Typically, that would come from a bond issuance. So in our case, we are transferring money from O&amp;M, and to follow the proper procedures, we have the board pass a resolution on an annual basis. The next thing is an interfund loan from the Ed Fund to the O&amp;M Fund. This is something that the district has passed in the, has passed in prior years. The resolution says that the loan is not to exceed $2.5 million. The idea behind this resolution is not that you're permanently loaning money, but it's more of a temporary thing to, so that the O&amp;M Fund does not go negative. And one of the reasons that that particular fund may go negative is that we receive the vast majority of O&amp;M Fund revenue in two installments, July and August, and then not again until February, March. And with the bulk of construction money, the budget being spent in the late summer and early fall, it does have the potential to put the O&amp;M Fund at a negative balance without this loan. So this loan would only be done from an accounting standpoint if we needed it. I think there's a decent chance we may in this upcoming year, but it's nice to have. And then the last resolution is an interfund transfer between the Ed Fund and the O&amp;M Funds. And as we continue to do construction projects, in some years, depending upon the existing fund balances and the size of the projects we're doing, there may need to be an additional transfer from Ed to O&amp;M. Right now, we are looking at $750,000. And what is being asked of the board and related to this resolution is that the board approve the public notice that would be published later this summer. That one has to be published between seven and 30 days prior to the public hearing, and then also to approve a public hearing at the August board meeting where the board would hear feedback and consider this particular transfer. And that is the annual business.
Policy review?
Yes, we have one policy recommended for first reading. That is Board Policy 7:270. And I'll just summarize that this policy has been updated to reflect current laws and align with best practice. The proposed revisions are the results of legal review as well as suggested revisions from PRESS, which is the IASB Policy Review Service. The main revision is the addition of a section regarding administering medical cannabis at school.
So in keeping with our board policy to eliminate gender pronouns from our policies as we review them, I'm proposing three amendments where those pronouns currently exist. One is at the top of page two, the first, like, full sentence under the crossouts, where it says each building administrator and/or his or her corresponding, et cetera. I'm proposing we change his or her to the administrators. Then at the bottom of page two, under item number three, it says, "The student, him or herself, when the self-administration, et cetera." I'm proposing we just eliminate the phrase "him or herself" and just keep it as the student when the self-administration takes place. And then the top of page three, the second, I guess it's like a, it's once, no, it's two sentences, but right above, the sentence right above void policy that starts, "The district may not deny a student attendance," you see that, "solely because he or she requires administration." I'm proposing we change he or she to the student.
Did it this?
Right.
Yep, this is for the first read, yes. Great, thank you. Lots of information items. We are now back at another opportunity for the community to address the board. So if there's anyone present who wishes to address the board, I'd remind you to state your name and community of residence, and you have three minutes if you have not addressed the board, or one minute if you would like to offer a follow-up comment.
Hello, I'm Diane Shanzavat from Willmet. I have multiple points that I'd like to make today, but I'm going to stick to one and make that about reading. I believe that you're drawing the wrong conclusions from the data that was presented tonight. When the data, when test scores are dropping as quickly as we've seen them drop in Willmet over the last seven years, even if you don't think that the data themselves are all that meaningful, that drop is telling you something. And what it's telling us is that there's something going wrong in Willmet schools across the board in reading. Last year, before COVID hit, I came and showed you what was happening to IAR tests, the statewide tests, and we'd seen in every grade except for sixth, large declines in ELA proficiency between 2015 and 2019, about 10 percentage point decline. They were large. And you said, "No, no, we care more about the math scores, we're going to look at growth." But you don't quite get the straight story. We're doing sort of this stuff where we're comparing ourselves to national averages instead of comparing ourselves to other like scores. Well, this is a report from before COVID, from fall to spring. The dots here, and this is from NWEA, it's this official stuff, they tell us what our growth should look like, and the bars tell us what they are. And what it tells us is that, and this was seventh and eighth grade, compared to other schools, our growth is in the bottom quartile. Of course, this year, it's even worse, but it's not, no surprise that things were particularly bad in reading, and we didn't see that in that. It's a bigger culture, there's something wrong in Willmet with reading. Everyone should be concerned about this, principals, the superintendent, parents, teachers, but to the board, we desperately need your attention. We learned from the strategic plan data retreats that our students get less instructional time, they have larger class sizes, we have less spending, we have very high teacher absence rates. We also know that we use a curriculum in the early grades by Lucy Calkins that's thought by data, by learning scientists, to be ineffective. Why are we still using it? Please do not wait until it is too late. We need to face this, we need to use sensible data comparing ourselves to other similar schools, we need to reverse this decline and give our students the schools that they deserve. I will continue to inform the community about this data, about the data at the website, Willmet Schools Project. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who'd like to address? Do you have anybody on Zoom who would like to address us? Then we will continue with our agenda. The next order of business is the consent agenda and action items. Are there any items that the board would like to move? Ms. Stone, please proceed with the motions.
Yes, I move to approve the personnel report dated June 14th, 2021. I move to approve the resolution authorizing payment for goods and services between now and the next board meeting scheduled for August 23rd, 2021. I move to approve the renewal of the State of Illinois School Treasurer Bond in the amount of $16 million. I move to approve the fiscal year 2022 District 39 tentative budget, as contained in the report, for immediate public display. And further, I move to approve the publication of notice of a public hearing on the tentative budget to be held at 7 o'clock PM prior to commencing the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 23rd, 2021. I move to approve the Willmet Community Special Education Agreement fiscal year 22, tentative budget, as contained in the report, for immediate public display. And further, I move to approve the announcement of a public hearing on the tentative budget to be held at 7 o'clock PM prior to the commencing of the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 23rd, 2021. I move to approve the resolutions authorizing accounting transfers from the operations and... from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. And I move to approve the resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan from the Educational Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. And I move to approve the hearing to discuss a permanent inter-fund transfer from the Educational Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. And further, I move to approve the publication of notice of a public hearing on the permanent inter-fund transfer to be held at seven o'clock P M prior to commencing the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. I move to approve the special education transportation contract extension with North Shore Transit, or N S T, for two years with fee increases of three point three percent for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year and three point three percent for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. I move to approve as first reading of Board of Education Policy seven colon two seventy, administering medicines to students as amended. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one through June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one in the following amounts. Educational Fund, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-three cents. O and M Fund, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents. Debt Services, sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Transportation, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. Capital Projects, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. Tort Fund, twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars, for a total, all funds, of one million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety cents. I move to approve the manual checks issued between May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one and June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one in the following amounts. Educational Fund, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and four cents. O and M Fund, forty thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and twenty cents. Debt Service, eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Transportation, thirty-one dollars and forty-eight cents, for a total, all funds, of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seventy-one dollars and forty-seven cents.
Have a second?
A second?
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll? Johnson's ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart? Bonnie Kin?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Babes? Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Finn?
Yes.
The A's have it, motion carried. So we will move on to conference items, old business.
Yes, thank you. First of all, just a note to the board. Discussed the August committee, the whole meeting last week, and we are just simply confirming that our August meeting will be held on Wednesday, August eighteenth at eight A M. And then I also wanted to share, if my screen will let me, is another bit of old business. Our metrics team has stopped working, but we could not let the final week of school go by without generating a report, just because it seemed unfinished if we didn't do a final report. So I'm just going to quickly share here my screen if I'm able to do so, because I think, again, there's some good news to be had here. You will remember a time when these blue dots were almost all the way to the left, showing substantial risk in all categories. We are now at a point where almost all are all the way to the right, showing very minimal risk. The risk is still present, we remain vigilant, and yet this is just really exciting news, so I did want to share that. That, of course, is the metrics dashboard, that just kind of like high-level look. We did generate a report, which gives you a few of each of these metrics, really from the beginning of the school year to the end. So if someone's super interested, they can, they can look at that full school year of data. And then we have updated our metrics graphs, which all show that steady decline of community spread. So, and new cases reported still from that last time. So it's been quite a, quite a few days since staff or students reported a case. All good news, and again, just wanted to celebrate that. We do not plan to continue to update these graphs over the summer, but wanted to share that good news for everyone. Thanks to Heather and her team for helping to aggregate all of that data, and everyone else, our school nurses, our administrators, who all had a hand in helping to put together all of that data.
It's a beautiful thing to see. Any other old business? New business? Good and well?
I just wanted to commend the foundation and everyone associated with the Silver Lining Project. I watched the video and it was amazing. What a nice positive reflection on a brutal year. And I also want to second all the thanks on the metrics reporting that was more tall feet. And for those who were watching earlier on, it was even larger than it is today. And I know y'all keep a sad sleep, watching that dip way into green. But congratulations and thank you.
And if anyone's interested, the Silver Lining book, the publication is out on the coffee table. So if you haven't had a chance to review that, next time you're lounging before or after a meeting, you might put through that. It's really just a beautiful, beautiful book.
I would like to share, Ms. Stone and I were at the staff appreciation event last week, and it was just such a joyful evening to see so many people come together and just celebrate the end of a really hard year in a really lighthearted, beautiful way. Many thanks to Tony, who I believe helped put that together. It was so wonderful to meet families, and we were lucky enough to hand out popcorn and ice cream and candy, and the kids' eyes just lit up. So it was wonderful to be able to be a part of that.
I would be remiss if I did not share my new favorite thing, which we were all, it's, it's a picture that's in that express publication that's coming out that I think you shared with us on Friday. So it's a picture of two little boys that are, yes, that are so excited about the Ramona construction. So to give you a little mental picture, so these two guys, both of them have on neon safety vests, both of them have their own tool belts. One of them has a helmet, and the other one has what looks like a plastic flathead screwdriver in his tool belt. And I just love that these guys, instead of being like, you know, oh, what an inconvenience, our school's being, you know, constructed, it's no, like, how can we help? Let's join in, we want to be a part of it. And I just, I loved it so much when I was reading the stuff in preparation for the meeting, that I'm looking forward to that publication.
There they are.
There they are, look at those guys, right? And they're wearing their masks, they're safe. Well, he's got a hammer too, I didn't notice that before. He's like, ready to work. Look at those guys.
Safety first.
Exciting thing to look forward to.
So may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss special education students, specific personnel, and negotiations?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss special education students, specific personnel, and negotiations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll? Johnson's ready? Anne Hart? Bonnie Kin?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Babes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Finn?
Yes.
Motion carried, we are now adjourned to executive session. The time is nine.